To twenty-five hundred.
Second?
Second, okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, last year it looks like they spent three thousand. The actual twenty-three, twenty-four.
So what was your motion Victor? Forty-seven hundred to what?
Twenty-five hundred. Twenty-five hundred. Okay, we have a motion in the second. Do you discuss?
Do we know what they're, what they're asking for anything?
I can't.
My guess would be that any funding would be the red books and the certificates of error, certificates of correction, which all have to be balanced.
Okay, so all favor?
Aye.
And the last one, I think is education.
The last one was I make a motion that would reduce the education to three thousand.
Second?
Second.
I'm gonna say.
I could plead with you on that.
Yeah, I'm gonna say if they're gonna bring in some of the people, I think that five thousand could be light even. Because somebody's gotta go through. If we hire somebody, unless they get a certificate, right? It's gonna take a little, you know.
Well, they do two types of training. One that they call their road show where they have training sessions at different towns every month or every quarter. Then they also have the week's training where for one solid week they go up to Yukon in the month of June, stay in a hotel up there and they do eight hours of classes every day for five days. So included in that training are the meals and the hotel.
And that's in the second half of the year?
It's in June.
So.
I'll modify.
Well, just.
Four or three.
Yeah, I'll modify it so that we change that five thousand to four thousand.
Second then.
That's what's on education?
Any discussion on that?
I agree with that one.
I think, I, on this one, I disagree because I think that five thousand, if they get people here, they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to get education fast because it's not only the assessment, it's also the personal property part and they got the rental part. Which in this town, the rentals are getting, getting to be expensive. So there's taxes on the rents, apartment building with the rents. So I vote no, but the rest of you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no?
Yeah, I'm gonna vote no this one.
So three to three, doesn't pass?
Doesn't pass. All right.
I can do a few on the mapping for twelve thousand eight fifty. You can reduce that to eight thousand eight fifty because there's money in the WPCA for the same bill and there's money in animal wetlands for the same bill.
What could we reduce it to?
Eight thousand.
Okay Victor, make that motion right there.
The twelve thousand eight fifty.
For mapping?
For mapping.
Twelve thousand eight fifty.
To what, eight eight five oh?
Eight eight five oh. And that's still gonna give me a cushion in the other departments in case they need some specialized mapping for the department.
We got a second on that?
A second.
Second, oh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good.
Look, that brings me to four two two, two four four.
Yeah. We're off a dollar, but that's fine.
It's probably in the benefits calculation or one of the settlement calculations where it was increased by a percentage.
Yeah.
Now the building department. What's our, what's our other revisiting?
Now that we can get a budget for the building department. I think shield, that something's.
Yeah, but as long as it's not fully shut.
I, I know.
So.
Oh, I don't care.
Yeah, and that floor is open as well, so.
Yeah.
The new building inspector starts tomorrow at seven AM.
Now, was there an increase in that person's pay bringing them on board?
No, they came in at ninety-one.
Okay.
After six months, they go to the ninety-seven.
Okay. Is that just because, because typically you bring them in at the lower stuff because this is, we need this position and they're experienced?
Right, and I know what he was making in the
Okay.
count. He's coming from Merida.
Okay.
So.
So it was a tick, what do we offer him so that it'll entice him to come here?
Yeah. And the assistant, the thirty-three thousand assistant. Was he leaving or?
He's left.
He's left, okay.
What I'm gonna need, because one person can't do both jobs. We arrange for somebody that will do the plan review for all of the multifamily and the commercial industrial buildings that Gordon would end up spending a lot of time going through dreams of blueprints. So until we can hire an assistant, we'll have somebody on the outside doing the work. And then once we hire the assistant and the assistant can do the inspections and the new person can do the plan review.
So that, that person's already committed to doing this?
Yes.
Okay, what kind of money are we talking?
Be honest with you, I don't remember.
Is it more than salary?
No. Well, it's gonna be an hourly basis. I mean, if we don't have one commercial permit come in, say if it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour and we don't have anybody come in, it's gonna cost us zero. If we have somebody come in with some big plan review like if the one that was withdrawn from planning and zoning, he might've spent twenty hours on it.
So. Really, there's no, there's no gold in the building department?
Um, and if we go ahead to conservation, I had a note about the detention clause, does it, have bids come in yet? I don't know.
I don't know, I'll find out for you.
I had a custom on that for that. The legal notice, when I wrote the note, the legal notice was out at that time.
Well, originally the bid specs were wrong and then we put it out a second time and there was a technicality in the legal notice. So that, and I don't remember whether they're in or not.
We'll spend, if we, if they do, how many, the legal notice, how many ponds?
We had, I believe there was around thirty in the bid. But they were prioritized as far as what was the most important ones to do.
So that forty thousand taken care very easily.
Forty thousand, yeah. And by putting it all into the bids, let's say three major ones came to thirty-seven thousand, there might be one that's done with eighteen on the list for three thousand, let's say do it.
Insurance. Revisit it? Insurance fines?
Which one?
Insurance fines.
I think we cut that again.
Uh, I don't have this, I don't have any, not insurance.
Oh, you don't, they need attorney for the legal penalty claims.
I'm looking at this one. Let me look at my first insurance. I was looking at the last decade. Do you have a note Jess on insurance? I'm finding which day it was. Would've been three thirteen was the first day.
It doesn't matter, you wanna cut it to twenty, but what's gonna happen when Jack and I get together on the revenues? There's gonna be revenue coming in from insurance claims and whatever the expenses here will put in as the revenue on the other side.
I don't wanna cut it.
Page twenty, page twenty-nine.
Yeah, I just have to revisit it. That's it.
It's really, the number really doesn't matter. Like this year we spent four oh one, we have four oh one that we already spent.
Okay. Street lighting still, I'm gonna go slightly behind you. That's for Jack. Oh, only because we weren't sure what.
Streetlight, I'm gonna ask you, don't cut that because we just found a a bill for streetlights by Governor's Hill and up Great Oak Road. We put in height much larger room, amount of lumens for school safety. And the school board had been paying it and they said they don't want, they're not gonna pay the bill anymore. So we can either reduce the, have them change the lights out, which I wouldn't recommend, or we're gonna be stuck with another two hundred and fifty bucks a month on our side.
Where's the white post?
They started at Governor's Hill and Great Oak and then the post going all the way up to the middle school.
So the technology's still the old technologies. They're like metal halides or they're high pressure sodium?
They're fifty thousand lum, no, they're, they're all LEDs.
Oh, they are?
Yeah. But they're, it's based on lumens and over fifty thousand lumens.
LEDs were energy savers.
Well, they are. And we were paying based on the others, it might be, instead of two hundred and fifty a month, it might be five hundred a month.
Or it's dark.
But it's not, my feeling for a couple hundred bucks, I'm not gonna tell whoever's to come in and take the height and also the parking lot where the buses park. So all which you want, they're in there in the dark.
Good, Jim, center school. Is that just a wild guesstimate? The ninety-three thousand on center school?
Page forty-nine. Not really. I mean, just take electricity, in the first six months we spent seventy, seventy-five hundred. Building's gonna be used a lot more next year.
Wouldn't that be, if the police are using it, that'd be in their budget, no?
They did, they did have an increase in their budget. He did. I think he doubled what they currently have for this year. I guess, yes.
Did they start that project?
They haven't started swinging the hammer yet, but they're, I know today was meeting with somebody on the steam heating system. So it's, you know, do we need to replace the whole thing or can the steam system be replaced or be repaired? So we're in the pre-construction, getting every, dotting our i's and crossing our t's.
Because I don't know how many years back we replaced the, the whole boiler.
And that's the thing, it's a new boiler.
Yeah.
And the question is, I was get rid of it because steam's old technology, but we found out today was that no, there's some valves, there's some traps and some thermostats.
Get air temp in there?
No, it was company name began with an M, I don't remember who it was.
Okay, so the heat, the heat's good. The facility maintenance, we got the thirty thousand in there.
You could, you could spend half a million there or you could spend nothing.
Because the police must have some maintenance in there. There you go. Okay, I wanna make a motion, we take, in center school, we take the facility maintenance down from thirty thousand to twenty thousand.
Second then.
Jack, how about if we took it out of police and put it into, left it in the center school, this way they don't have it. We know it's gonna get used for what it needs to be used for, not where somebody might say, oh, I have money left in my facility maintenance account, I think I wanna paint the locker rooms and I wanna do this and I wanna do that. Whereas if it's out of their budget and it's under Renzoni's control, he can prioritize what has to be done.
I guess I gotta go see it in the police department first.
Did you have a second on the motion?
Yes, I did.
With, is it, is it, I don't know, is it zoned there now, the heat? So will them moving in there cause an increase? There will be a cause, there will be an increase in the, like the, the usage in that building, correct?
Yes.
Are they metered seven or seven or is it?
No, totally. There's actually four different meters from there, but it's not gonna be one just for the police.
If, what I understand, they still have that problem. If one room is three hundred degrees and the other is forty below zero. Okay, they still had that problem, they thought he corrected it. They thought Mike, did Mike Dagostino?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, we thought he corrected it. He did for momentarily, but it's still backed up.
And what they found today was up in the crawl space, they found the valve he said it's probably fifty years old, it's up there and it just froze and shut and the heat's blowing right through it.
So the two million dollars in ARPA is gonna turn into what?
I, no, nothing about the dollars for that project. Wasn't handled in my office.
So the facility maintenance for the police is twenty thousand?
So if you brought that down to five?
For the police department?
Yeah, and that way they'd have some money for their specific.
Bring that to five?
Bring that to five.
Leave the twenty alone in the other one?
Yep.
Okay, I gotta change my motion then. Or just?
Withdraw the?
Withdraw on that motion. Okay. So the police department.
What page is it on the new one? Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. We're taking the facility maintenance, the twenty thousand. Okay, we're taking it down to five.
I'll second that.
Okay. We did that, was it? Any discussion on that?
Uh, just a question, do we know at what time they'll, like, is that enough to cover however much of the year that they'll be in the existing building?
That's what I'm thinking, why are you giving the five there?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay.
That was facility maintenance, you said?
Facility maintenance, police department down from twenty to five.
No, from ten to five, right?
No.
That's a, a little crazy.
You're looking at equipment maintenance, right? Yeah, you're. Still is.
Okay. And then that's center school. We just leave it alone.
Let's look at the electric over there.
Center school?
It's gonna be another one.
The police or center?
Both.
Okay.
Police, that's matter, Jeff, sixteen thousand.
So the previous motion though, to reduce the center school facility maintenance from thirty thousand to twenty thousand is out.
Yes, okay. Yeah, Jack has drew it.
In center school, I raised it from ten to twenty. Based on what they spent this year.
Before we leave the police? So they, they increased the electricity line?
I would leave the electricity right where it is.
On the police? They doubled it from eight to sixteen?
Right, I would, I would leave it at eight, but leave what's in center school in there again.
Okay.
So center school stays at seven?
Bring it down to eight.
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't move on from the police, what's that, the quick question? Oh, I thought you said we were moving on.
No, so one of the.
It's just that those two depart, those two line ends inter, they go between the two, the building. So you could have something budgeted in two places.
So, yeah, so the police, when he came and talked to us, he said that he, see how we doubled electricity from eight to sixteen? So we're just gonna leave it in center rather than?
Center school.
Yeah.
We're gonna, I thought you said we're gonna bring it down to eight.
Bring it down.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Why don't we bring it down to?
So I'll make that motion.
What is the motion?
The, for the police, in the police department, to bring electricity down from sixteen thousand to eight thousand.
Okay, leave a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
And then we're leaving center law, oh, hi.
Yeah.
And then we're leaving center law.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
I wanna see what they did in heat also. Same thing on heat. I would bring the police heat down to
Heating fuel oil?
Yeah, actually, I'd bring it down to about three. But then increase center school by four or five.
So.
Bring it down to, to three thousand or am I?
I'd bring it to, from twelve down to three, that'll hit me in case they don't move on July first, they're in there for a little while. I'll have money to pay for it there, but then I'm gonna need more money in center school, a little bit more.
Good, so you make a motion?
Motion to decrease the heating, fuel, oil on your police department from twelve to three thousand.
Okay.
Second?
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay.
And you know.
Center school, we doing that?
Well, I'm just, with some of the, like, the lady explained to me today was he found the valve that was, the valve I was telling you about and the heat was just blowing right through and some of the classrooms, even though they had the heat set at sixty, the heat was at eighty. And he said, once that valve's replaced, so hopefully we'll be using less oil next year. So the forty should be good, I'm hoping it'll be good in center school.
So we could leave it at forty?
So, so we haven't touched center school?
Right.
Center school, we're gonna leave it that way?
Leave, leave it the way it is.
Okay, we took all the pluses and minuses out of the police department?
Right.
Okay. Let's, let's do that. Okay, what else we got?
Look, I have a new number on the police, so three one oh seven, three seven three.
Three one oh, thirty-one oh seven, three seven three.
Right.
Okay.
Were there any other lines that you might've increased? Should we move? Should we just look real quick before we move on?
Yeah, I didn't look at the rest of the police, I was just trying to look at the ones that could've been duplicated between center school and there.
Uh, Jim, good question, buybacks for the police. Do they have buybacks? Like, do they use the buybacks?
They have the worst buybacks of all the contracts.
Really?
Worst cut, in my mind.
Yeah.
Because they get buybacks for unused vacation time. Um, yeah. They get buybacks on their sick time and on their vacation time.
Is there a max?
Yeah, I don't remember what it is, but there is a maximum, I think it might be two weeks.
Two weeks.
And you only get the buyback if you leave the job? Or retire?
If you don't, on vacation, if they don't use their vacation.
Paid yearly?
Yep.
So they can save two weeks to get what back?
Yeah.
But they can't roll it over?
They can roll over some, but again, it might be two weeks they can roll over, so they get to decide, do I wanna use it? Do I wanna roll it over or do I wanna get paid for it?
Um, and Paul mentioned waste removal, are they still going to need that? We have four thousand in there right now.
I'm gonna ask you to not answer your question, I think, I just got one of the bid, well, the bids were due today. I saw one of them, I didn't open the other one, so I don't, I don't know the numbers yet and I don't wanna speak about it because I don't know what, what I was looking at.
The bids, the bids weren't open yet?
One of them, they had emailed.
Okay.
But that'll be for this building, for the police department building?
Yeah. Yep, and then we still have to discuss, are we gonna put a dumpster over with the police? And then have another dumpster over with the parking wreck or we're just gonna put it in the back in the center someplace? Still has to be decided. I'm hoping they put one four-yard dumpster right in the middle of the two buildings or put it over closer to parking wreck.
I mean, the most sense because they have two different dumpsters and who doesn't want to pay for it and they're arguing all the different dumpsters.
What's the parking wreck's official status, the center school?
They're officially over there.
They're in there.
Right.
That's, that's their home base.
Right.
But they're gonna stay?
Yeah.
So, and then how do we charge them? We charge them for utilities to?
No, it's all in the center school. Just like when they were in this building, they didn't get charged for utilities.
I see a lot of guys, I come to the meetings, they're, I see cars all parked, there's a lot of cars parked over there at center.
They're running programs, aren't they?
Yeah, it's, it's a use, I can tell you that.
Do they use some gymnasium or is it just like a classroom or do you have any idea?
I'm, I'm guessing, but answer yes to both of your questions. I know ambulance was using the classrooms for a while during their EMT training. And Nikki, I looked in the rest of the ones in police, it doesn't seem like there's any.
Yeah, I skipped them too.
One question, there was one that I did have a question about in recycling, solid waste. And I think we thought it might be a bid, but contracted services disposal. We have it at one fifty and last year we had one fifteen, five hundred. So can that be reduced at all?
If you look at the year-to-date number in a half a year, now it's gonna be higher because of the flood. But we spent a hundred and five in a half a year. So even if you said thirty percent of that was from the, the flood, so bring it down to seventy-five.
You're right.
And we'll spend one fifty by the end of the year. And that's part of the bid that, on their number by the end of the week, whether we're gonna get a cheaper price than what we're currently paying.
Just, just for information. There's one department here, you have one person. Person makes seventy-two thousand. Benefits, sixty-one thousand. Hundred thirty-four thousand, one person.
What department are you talking about?
Huh?
What department?
Economic Development. One person, sixty-two, seventy-two, sixty-one thousand in benefits. There you're, you almost got a one-to-one. And that's, that's gonna kill us.
Between FICA workers' comp and pension, you're talking twenty-five percent. Actually, yeah, because that would be a clear call, so twenty-five percent, so it's seventy thousand.
You got the medical, this has gotta be a family.
You're talking about twenty thousand and then forty thousand for the medical, that's sixty right there.
When you, we do medical. Okay, maybe we're fooling ourselves here. The medical is the full price, forty thousand, right?
No, it's, it's the medical expense less the, what the employee is paying for. I'll go to planning and zoning as an example.
Do, do that one right there, economic, you got one person there.
Sure. Okay, so FICA's five thousand, five sixty-five. Workers' comp, four thousand, oh eighty-one. Life insurance, six hundred and seven. Pension, twelve thousand, one seventy-five. Medical insurance, thirty-nine, four oh seven.
Thirty-nine, four oh seven. Thirty nine, four oh seven.
And the calculation for that is a premium of forty four thousand, two seventy seven, times point eight nine.
Forty four thousand, we, we, you know.
It's outrageous.
That's, the, the.
So.
Why is the school board's, less?
The eleven percent copays taken out of there.
Why is the school board's medical so much less? Hmm? Wha, what's the percentage you, you took out of there?
Well, the school board is on, they.
What's, what's the percentage?
Eleven percent.
Eleven percent?
Yeah.
They're paying twenty.
Yeah.
Why aren't we paying twenty?
Negotiated, well, can, I can't answer your question.
Well, then, you know, I'd, I'd like a shot at negotiating these things. I, I'd like a shot at negotiating these things.
I'd love to see you, we're, we're starting negotiations tomorrow, as a matter of fact, with the union, I'll talk to the boss about it.
This is, you're, you're talking forty four thousand for, for medical.
Mm-hmm.
Let me see.
And one blank.
What is it, what's the, what's the, what's the, uh, school board in there for medical?
For nine unions, eleven percent.
Have we looked around for another policy, or any, a different carrier?
We just went out to bid last year, and this is the second year of a two-year bid.
Why would the union ever not go for it when they're only paying eleven percent as an employee?
No, it's, um, our fallback is the state plan, but there instead of forty four thousand, it'd be about forty seven thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
As tax ways and to support their medical.
Medical insurance, company.
Most people are paying a lot more for their.
Paying medical insurance. He's got, he's got a deduction, but I wanna see.
I'm not disagreeing with you, because I probably had more medical bills over the last fifteen years, and I had each person everything.
See, how about it?
Insurance kept me out of bankruptcy.
Yeah.
What was, municipalities used to pay very, very well, and they used to make it up in benefits, because the politicians could say, we gave them very small breaks, but they'd give out the benefits, like when I was.
That doesn't tell me.
I accepted it all for free.
I don't, I don't know that we have that.
Alcohol hog.
Back in nineteen seventy.
I understand, we're beating our brains out of you, you're paying net forty four thousand for it.
I was making about.
You're paying somebody seventy thousand, you're paying sixty five thousand in benefits.
I was working at Arnold papers at the time.
We're beating, beating our brains out, maybe just say here, here Tom, start paying.
I was gonna take that, twenty percent couldn't pay to be a police officer. What a fantastic.
Do you remember, does anybody remember what, what the, they said the school package was, cause I asked Howard, I can't remember.
The thing though, Jack, when you negotiate the contract, anything that has a monetary benefit is negotiated as a package, so the medical insurance, the salary, so, this, they might say that the salary, we want four percent, but we'll give you, we're gonna pay more in
Right.
copays, and I don't know what their negotiation strategies are over there.
Who's that?
At the Board of Ed.
Yeah. When, when I was allowed in, in that one, we changed the insurance, it was that, well, we entered blue, it was the most expensive, went to an HSA, saved a lot of money. They never asked me back again, but.
Well, they just, they, then they went to full insur, they went back to full insurance because it was cheaper.
Cheaper at that time with the state, and now they're back to something else.
And then they went.
HSA.
Now they went back to the HSA.
High deductible HSA, yeah, our family deductible's five thousand, but the Board of Ed kicks in half of that.
On the, uh, on the HSA?
On the HSA.
Okay.
But then, I mean, it's a high monthly cost to the employee as well.
It is, okay.
Yeah.
Teachers pay twenty one point five percent of the medical premium, is what he said.
Twenty, up to, was it?
He said teachers pay twenty one point five percent of the medical premium.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll find out, I just wanna, I wanna get, how much it is for family, how much it is for, uh, single, see what the, what their, what their rates are. Say, why can't we, if they have a good rate, why can't we do that here?
We could, we'd have to negotiate, there's no.
Well, you know what?
I, unfortunately, since we're, no, we're, we're in a public meeting that's being broadcast, I'm not gonna talk about negotiation strategies.
I'm just talking about cost.
Cause it could, could be some of the union members and people listening and.
All right, but I mean, it's, the, we're, you know, a good part of this budget, we're stuck with, it's seventy, seventy percent salary and, and benefits, actually, it could probably be more.
I have a question, I have a question about, um, highway maintenance. Is the, is it because of the flood, or is the, the two items I'm looking at are, uh, ceiling, ceiling cracks and signs, highway. Can those numbers be reduced?
They always get better in the springtime.
Yeah, but I mean, I, uh, you know, the, last year it was seventy five, now it's eighty five, and the signs are twenty three.
Signs, I don't really know, um, the ceiling, the cracks is, certainly can oil change in your car, you can pay me now, or you can pay me later. If you seal the cracks, the water doesn't get in, if you gain a year or two longer on the life of the pavement, you're ahead of the game.
I don't know what they spent last year.
They have two straight shots.
Yeah, I have that.
We do have last year.
We go up, we go up the block, to play with that two straight.
So last year for ceiling cracks was seventy four, three fifty. And what was the other one you were asking?
Sign, highway signs.
Sixteen, zero, seventy three. Uh, it's thirty nine on the newest, and it's thirty five on the one from our other unit.
You guys did one less column, thirty nine.
I'm lost, I'm looking.
He was asked, no, I was given multiple page numbers.
Well, that's how I was, when you were, I thought you were still talking to Victor, and it's like, that's why I got confused.
So, so the ceiling, ceiling cracks last year, actual, was seventy four, three fifty, and then the signs was sixteen, zero, seventy three.
And with the crack ceiling, I could, he pays so much per linear foot, so when people come in at the end of the day, they tell him, they haven't measured out what they do, and they're told, stop, when you get to seventy five thousand. If you gave him a hundred and fifty, he'd seal cracks, and we got to one fifty.
Okay, so, what would the way is?
The signs, you might be on to something there, since last year was only sixteen thousand.
All right, so I'll, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we reduce the highway signs from twenty three to eighteen thousand.
I'll second that. And basically, those signs are just all road signs, whether it's like street signs, or stop signs, or whatever?
Unless they have to do with littering, and then they're paid for with, with the nick money.
What was that again, Victor, to, to, from twenty three to what?
Eighteen.
Eighteen? You got a second?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, you did, oh. Any discussion? All in, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Everybody find their way home without the sign. Okay. Jim, the town aid improved roads, that's on top of what we get that bears with this, with seven fifty, right?
Correct.
Okay.
That's why if you look at the capital plan, it'll say nine hundred thousand for road paving, because of that, that one forty three plus the seven fifty.
Okay. And there's not another one for roads, for the state, no?
There's some for supplies, we get eighty some odd thousand, uh, for municipal improvements.
The, um, I think we had a question on the, uh, in the finance department, the payroll system again, the fifty thousand dollars?
It's a complete guess.
Okay, so it could be more, it could be less, is it, you don't even?
I don't think it'll be more, cause when we looked at, on ADP, which didn't really give us all the bells and whistles we wanted.
Yeah.
It was gonna be in the low thirties.
Okay.
So that's what I, I said, all right, cause we're in the low thirties, we had to, and get something customized, we could get it done for fifty.
And the payroll system is gonna be for every department in town, whether it's police, fire, town ball?
Everybody in town except for the Board of Education.
Okay.
Does it marry in with your general ledger?
Well, we haven't bought one yet, but it, that'll be one of the first things, if they say they can't, we're not even gonna be, uh.
Cause I, you have, you have triple work.
Yeah, like, we talked to, I talked to this mall company a couple of weeks ago. And they want to be paid à la carte for every little different change, so if we hired thirty five people to do early voting, which is about what we had to hire, they wanna be paid for the early voting people.
Have you spoken maybe to your, um, accounting software company to find out, are they working with any payroll systems that works with your software?
I'll talk to you about it when we're not in a meeting.
Okay.
I have a note that you guys had questions on planning and zoning, about the attorney attending meetings, and we could go that back or something? Someone to separate visit?
The, uh, the pension, is this a net amount there for a pension too?
That's what we have to pay to the state.
No, no, maybe, we take the, we take, do we take anything out of the, of, of W two for pension for the employee?
That's above and beyond this.
Okay, so this is net?
Correct.
So in other words, if we pay sixteen percent, the employee pays how much?
Well, I get two separate bills from the, uh, this, the state, one for the employees, where they take the, uh, payroll times the, uh, percentage. And then I get one for the town, same thing. Say, it's a lot of money for what you get out of that pension.
Well, teachers, what, how many years, for, teachers, what, thirty seven years?
Thirty seven and a half.
Thirty seven, I, I think it's seventy five percent your last, your last, your last average.
Seventy five percent.
What you're currently making, okay.
So, they're getting roughly two percent per year. On the, on the town side, we get one and a half percent a year, so if I, I've been here for twenty years, I'll get, after twenty years, get thirty percent I'm gonna pay. That's not, but we have them paying in sixteen percent per year, every year. So, it's a lot of money.
It is.
It is, but look at the poor people that now have a lot of retirement tied up in a four one K.
Oh.
Right now, okay.
I was talking to somebody the other day, that their, uh, four one K went down by over ten percent in a week, and they were having a panic.
Yeah.
No, you're right, just told them.
I know.
Don't take it out now, see if you can put it off.
Yeah, it depends on your age, you know, that's.
It depends on your age.
No, you, you don't take it out when it's in a dip.
Oh, I would never touch it, trust me, mine has gone up and down a lot more than ten percent, but it's grown considerably, so, over time.
Yeah, if you take, you take the last twenty years, twenty years out, it's, it's really, really, it's all grown, but problem is, it's, you know, times like this, if something tragically happened to somebody, and they wanna cash off that, uh, plan at, at the low part, it could, it could have cost yourself.
Or let's take, so, two thou, you're retired in, in two thousand eight, when the pensions went, but stock market went down by fifty percent. If you had to put a roof on your house, something, you had to take it out, you're in trouble, you can't wait.
Okay, here's what I suggest, okay? I'm gonna put my little quickie sheet on this, I'm gonna put, department by department, last year and this year, okay? And you see, now, I don't have last year's, I don't have last year's, unless I can go by this, last year's actual?
Yeah. That's why I put that column in, and I just reprinted it.
Okay. So I think last year's actual to this year's budget, and see each department and where the big raises.
If you and, if you and I could get together, I don't know what your schedule is.
I'll see what I can do. I got that.
Even if it's on us, anytime over the weekend, um, but I know you're going full speed ahead at this time of year.
Tomorrow, I'm down in, uh, Middlefield, and my client's a huge horse farm, beautiful, beautiful, top shelf, okay? But, you gotta depreciate those damn horses, you gotta put, you know, Mr. Bucky and, that's a, you gotta, I gotta list out all of the horses, I gotta, you know, it's just.
You gotta list their names.
Yeah, well, that's how you're gonna identify a horse, you know? I gotta call them and ask them what it's, right? So, I tell my wife, I says, it's the one time I really get, I get my information from the horse's ass.
Then you gotta, then you gotta take the income for the horseman who you sell to the mushroom farms.
Actually, uh, actually, and there's, there's a state grant for that all the time, to, to, for the compost pile with the move on.
Appreciate it.
I can tell you this.
It's a revenue stream for you.
He's, they got a huge arena, indoor arena, you know, with the thing that they, they get, they got those piece, they jump, the horses, right? So, I don't know, that's what I'll be tomorrow. You wanna come soon?
No. No, I'll be down tomorrow.
Goodbye, see Mr. Lucky. Those horses are, those horses are expensive, we're talking two, three hundred thousand.
That's cheap.
Is it, yeah, yeah, I mean, how do you pay a horse to jump over a, oh, that's quite a lot.
I love the ones that are retired, they're paying, they're just, um.
Stud fees.
Yeah.
It's for stud fee.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Suck it.
I'm outta here.